Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
I apologize that we got off to, uh, we're getting off to a little bit of a late, uh, timed and normal, but we have some business to discuss. So, thank you for attending today's meeting. I'd like to call the regular meeting of South Carolina Council for Tuesday, April 12th, to order. Ms. B., would you please give us an invitation to understand and remain standing at the table?
Let us pray. Our dear county, I will be Father, we acknowledge you as the one in whom we live, move, and have our being. We thank you for bringing us together once again to discuss the business of this county. We invite your presence and ask that you abide with us as we approach every agenda item that is before us. We ask your blessing and support, everyone, under the sound of my voice. We ask that you continue to bless government, local and federal, and international. We ask that you continue to impress some, some thoughts and love in the hearts of the Russians. We ask that you continue to be with the Ukrainian sky. In all the things that we see, we know that there are still little blessings that we can't even see. And we ask that you continue to bless all men and women who serve in uniform, or especially those who are serving in harm's way. And as we go through our agenda, we ask that you give us wisdom, understanding, clarity of mind. And again, as we petitioned during our earlier meeting, we thank you for bringing us to another budget cycle. We acknowledge you as the one who, who has everything in your hands, the earth is yours and the goodness thereof. And we just thank you for assigning us as stewards for the portion that you will give us. Help us to be good stewards, to, to distribute it with honor and love. These blessings we ask in your name. Amen.
Please join us in the prayer of allegiance, being led by Mr. William B. Jefferson, Council District Number Two. Good evening. First, we give praise and adoration for Almighty God. Would you join me in the excitement of the prayer of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Reverend William B. J. Jefferson is originally from Fort Pierce, Florida. He is married to Patricia G. Jefferson. Together they have one daughter Pamela White, one granddaughter Tamara, and three great grandchildren, Brandon, Malaya, and William of Orlando, Florida. Reverend Jefferson is a Vietnam veteran earning a Purple Heart after being injured by shrapnel from a mortar. Reverend Jefferson graduated from Florida A&amp;M with a bachelor's of science degree in criminal justice. Reverend Jefferson did further studies at Morris College School of Religion. Reverend Jefferson is currently the proud pastor of Saint Stevens, of Stevens Missionary Baptist Church located at nineteen seventeen Wharton Road, Rembert, South Carolina. Reverend William Jefferson is a member of Omega Psi Phi fraternity incorporated and believes strongly in his cardinal principles, manhood, scholarship, perseverance, and uplift. He is a firm believer that an investment in the youth's future is of the greatest importance. Reverend Jefferson believes that we should not only invest money, but we should invest our time in the youth as well. Reverend William Jefferson is a life member of the NAACP. His, his passion in life is coaching and teaching our young children. Reverend William Jefferson's favorite scripture is Olympians four thirteen. "I can do all things through Christ which strengthens me." His motto is, "If it ain't genuine, it ain't love." He currently lives in Council District Two. Thank you for your service.
Mr. Ramon, any changes to the agenda?
Yes, sir. There are two changes, if you don't mind. We'd like to add the Emerging Leaders Group, led by Ms. Erica, and they, she will speak on their behalf. And then, we would also like to, item number one, White, that will be the first item after the approval of the agenda, and the Emerging Leaders will be item number two, after the approval of the minutes. I should say, the approval of the minutes.
Everybody's kind of related. A motion to approve the agenda would be amended to two items. It's been moved and properly seconded, and we have two to the agenda, two items, moving from our new business, item one, to just after approval of the minutes. Any discussion? Any one all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? A motion to approve our minutes for our regular meeting for Tuesday, March twenty-second, twenty twenty-two. So, moved by Mr. Bates, that in the ground is beginning that we approve our minutes from our regular meeting for March twenty-second. Any discussion? Any one all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The next item on the agenda is a presentation by Ms. Danielle Lindley, Community Relations South Carolina Human Affairs Commission. Welcome, Ms. Lindley.
Welcome. Thank you for having me. And for the sake of projecting, is it okay if I remove first?
Yes.
So, good evening, Council members. My name is Danielle Lindley, and I'm a community relations consultant with the South Carolina Human Affairs Commission. Uh, we are the only state agency that's dedicated to preventing and eliminating unlawful discrimination in housing, employment, and public accommodations. Uh, additionally, one of the things that we're doing in the Community Relations Division, I'm empowered by the, uh, South Carolina Human Affairs Law Statutory Authority, and that'll be Title, Title One, Chapter Thirteen, section seventy. Uh, we are empowered to work with local communities to create or to form these community relations or conciliation councils. And so, these councils really work to study problems or specific instances of discrimination. These can be religion, race, disability, age, national origin, sex, um, and really to foster through community effort goodwill and conciliation among the groups in the community. These councils, they can do this through education, crisis prevention, um, they can do this through events, they can do this through holding forums. They can also make recommendations to the commission. And this is for the development of policies and procedures for programs of formal or informal education, and we in turn can recommend them to the appropriate state agency. Um, and one of the best successes that we really see for these councils is when they are supported or partnered with their local county or city government. Um, and this can either be through direct or indirect partnership. An example of a direct would be CRCs that we have in Greenville, Myrtle Beach, and in Anderson County. In Greenville County, this CRC is established through their county office, uh, and they really focus primarily on housing discrimination, both through the filing of complaints and through education efforts. Uh, we see it in Anderson County, where the residents are partnered with the county, and when we look there, they focus on education, cultural events, as well as, um, kind of community drives to support more underserved areas of that community. We look at Myrtle Beach, they're established in the city. And what this looks like is they study the impacts on the hearing impaired community or the LGBTQ community, and they are currently working with their city to establish a public accommodation ordinance. When we look at areas like Aiken, this is an indirect partnership, where they work with the county, with through a staff liaison, to really kind of bring together groups that are working on raised relations in the area, to collaborate their efforts together to create a wider impact. Recently, we had the opportunity to partner with the U of S, the University of South Carolina, Center for Civil Rights, and the Sumter County Museum, where we brought forth the Justice for All exhibit. This was two, this was two different sessions. So, the first week was that panel discussion, um, and the second week was a collaborative event. And this is where residents of Sumter County really kind of came together to brainstorm solutions to issues that they identified in the community, um, and as it related to Justice for All and the civil rights movement, both in Sumter and at large. Some of the issues that they brought up were messages on the South Carolina Department of Transportation sign, the education and awareness, youth involvement, a call for diverse sectors to really come together to support unity, different integration with religious organizations in the area, as well as addressing mental health issues and issues of disability in the community. But they also mentioned a lot of positives, um, like local community activism, the being true is correct for law enforcement, as well as the pastors. So, as a result of this meeting that we, these events that we had, we're hosting a Community Relations Council interest meeting on Thursday, next Thursday, April twenty-first, twenty twenty, at six P.M. This will be at the Sumter County Museum. And what we're looking to do there is we'll all come together and kind of discuss what exactly a CRC is, what that formation looks like, the powers that it can have, as well as what are the next steps needed to make that council a reality. It's open to the public, everyone is welcome to attend, and we would really love to see a member of the county staff there, whether this can be for, one, knowing what's going on in your area, knowing the Human Affairs Commission as a state agency is working here. We always love to let the community to know that we, we are here and we're not trying to, um, overstep. And then, we're also really looking to see that with this support, we really think that we can impact life, like quality of life for Sumter County residents. We are, we are more than happy to kind of meet further to discuss this, if something that you would be interested in. Uh, we can give you more in-depth information about what involvement from Sumter County Council would look like, and ultimately, what we would be asking you to do is it would collaborate with bylaws and the establishment of a community relations council itself. So, and, um, I know that we're all pressed for time today, so I want to keep it short and sweet, as a respect for everyone's time, but thank you again, on behalf of our commissioner, on behalf of the South Carolina Human Affairs Commission, for letting you speak. And we would really look forward to seeing you guys there April twenty-second, twenty-first, six P.M. at the Sumter County Museum.
Thank you, Ms. Lindley.
Thank you.
And now, I'd like to recognize Ms. Erica Williams from our Sumter County Economic Development Board, who was very involved with the emerging leaders of our high schools.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, fellow council members, and Sumter resident and friends. I am Erica Williams with Sumter Economic Development, and I am delighted to present to you just a few of our twenty twenty-three class of emerging leaders, uh, excuse me, twenty twenty-two class of emerging leaders. Uh, there will be twenty twenty-three graduates, as these are high school juniors. We have twenty-six emerging leaders in Class Four, um, this year, and of course, Emerging Leaders is a program designed for high school juniors to immerse them in the inner folds of leadership, so they have various sessions from nonprofit development to finance and government. And today, we are just here to watch our local government at work. I'd like to introduce to you just five of our emerging leaders. We will have some additional students that will be visiting at the next meeting. We have, again, twenty-six total students, seven from Lee County and nineteen from Sumter County. So, I'd like to introduce now, as that is, Dan Shaquille Williams from, um, Lakewood High School, Victoria Jordan from Crestwood High School, Janaya Morton from Crestwood High School, Harrington Pinkley, Sumter High School, and Chanel West from Lakewood High School. So, um, and, um, as always, it deemed appropriate at some point, we would love to snap a photo to commemorate us being here, uh, this evening. So, thank you very much. If there are any questions, comments, or concerns, I'll take my seat. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. B. The next item on the agenda, reason on request number twenty-two zero, twenty-six seventy-five, Warehouse Boulevard.
RC twenty-two oh two is a request of twenty-six seventy Warehouse Boulevard in the county. The applicant is Mr. Drake Brunson, who is the property owner of that. This request is a rezon approximately seven point two five acres of a nineteen point two five acre tract from heavy industrial to limited commercial. Uh, this property is the remnants of what was developed as Warehouse Boulevard, which is an industrial development that's accessed off of a private road, which is why you see that red pipe stem that goes all the way to fifteen south. The entirety of this red acre, our red, red picture represents the, um, nineteen point two five acres. Uh, it is currently mostly undeveloped and wooded. Uh, it is the remainder of the tract. Um, we do have other development on the, on the property, uh, but as you can see, the stuff that runs on fifteen south is a general commercial, the stuff further back is heavy industrial. Heavy industrial and commercial districts are two of the districts in the county that can be accessed by private roads that are under common ownership or have use approval. This is not something we allow for residential development, but we do allow it for industrial and commercial development. So, just as a little background, they did subdivide the property into a two acre tract that they intend to use for their own business purpose, with remaining seventeen point two five acres, which is subject to this request, being retained with the intention of placing a home on it. Uh, this is what it looks like. The area that you see in orange or in yellow is the two acres that they intend to use for their industrial use. The remaining tract is what they're proposing to rezone to a limited commercial. Within the limited commercial zoning district, single-family residential is a conditional use, so it would be subject to staff level review. Uh, one of the reasons that they're asking specifically for a commercial designation as opposed to a residential designation is to protect the property interests of the existing industrial development around it. When you have industrial property that butts residentially zoned property, it impacts the developability of that industrial property in terms of massively increased setbacks. Um, under the twenty forty comprehensive plan, uh, this is in the suburban development planning area, which does support a mix of uses, so it is reasonable and rational to request a commercial designation on this tract. Planning Commission does recommend approval of this request. Limited commercial zoning district, we believe is an appropriate request to allow what they proposed uses without having a negative impact on the existing development on those properties adjacent. Have you answered any questions that you may have?
Any questions? Remove approval for three. Seconded, that we have first reading our RZ request number twenty-two dash zero. Any discussion? Any one all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? First reading is approved. Ordinance amendment number twenty-two oh seven.
Uh, this is a request being brought forward, uh, actually by planning staff on behalf of the Transit Authority. This would modify several sections of Article Eight, Section I, related specifically to signage, to allow the Transit Authority to put, um, marketing signage that they would sell to advertisers on their future bus shelters and park benches as part of a fundraising effort to help them create local match money that they need for federal grants that they're eligible for. Uh, in particular, right now, uh, they would like to be able to sell this advertising, uh, because they're in the process of placing through twenty twenty-two multiple new bus stop signs. I don't know if any of you have noticed, but they're little two-by-three signs all over town right now that say future bus stop sign. This is more than just a sign that's going down the road, it's going to be a combination of park benches, as well as all-weather shelters, um, and as part of this movement forward to create a more defined public transit presence, um, they do want to bring in this component of advertising sales. This particular ordinance amendment is modeled off of the regulations in Richland County and in the City of Columbia that are used for the compact transit system. Uh, so in particular, it's going to be signage designing and branding, this is what they're proposing to do, it'll have a bus stop number and route number on it. Um, it will give you a new impression of the, the bus system. I don't know if anybody's tried to figure out where to catch a bus in town before they put the two-by-three signs out, but they used to put like a white mark on the telephone poles, which was, I guess, how you figured out that you were supposed to catch a bus. Um, so this will definitely give them, uh, more presence in the community. Um, so these transit shelters and benches are going to have some square footage for, for available advertising right now under ordinance. We don't allow it, uh, so we do need to come in and retool the regulations to permit it. Uh, this is the proposed, uh, bus shelter that they're looking at. Um, there are going to be multiple options. We're proposing to allow up to eighty-eight square feet of marketing panel space for each bus shelter. It can be through a combination of doing one of the three panels, two of the three panels, whatever would add up to that eighty-eight square feet. If you have a bus stop that has this shelter as well as a park bench, they wouldn't be entitled to put advertising in both pieces, it would be one or the other. Which brings you to this, uh, these park benches can accommodate up to fourteen square feet of signage that are also available to sell. Uh, these marketing panels, um, like I said, you can put them on the park bench, or you can put them on a shelter. So, if you have a shelter that has a bench as well, you won't see it both places, but if it's a standalone bench, then they could put marketing on the bench. Uh, these are the particular ordinance provisions that we're proposing to change, which you see highlighted in yellow at the bottom, is the section that we would be putting in specifically as a caveat for SWhorTah. As a public entity, they're funded by the, by the state, um, so they do get some protections in terms of signage that are similar to what the state and local governments get. So, we felt it was appropriate to put them allow under the regulations that don't require permits, similar to what the city encountered by. Uh, we're also adding this to the list of exceptions on prohibited signs specifically for SWhorTah, uh, so we are specifically self-vowing out that these particular signs for the purpose of the regional Transit Authority are allowed, uh, whereas they would not be allowed under other starting standards. Planning Commission does recommend approval of this request. Uh, we do believe that this ordinance amendment is approved, will allow a valuable stream of income for the Transit Authority to continue pursuing upgrades to their systems through federal grants. Answer any questions, perhaps?
Motion approved for three. Seconded. It's been moved and properly seconded, and we have first reading on ordinance amendment number twenty-two dash oh seven. Any discussion? Any one all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? First reading of ordinance amendment twenty-two oh seven is approved.
Uh, RZ twenty-two oh one, which is at twenty, uh, one seventy-five Mark Main Street, uh, is a request rezoned one point seven seven acres from neighborhood commercial to agricultural conservation. There have been no changes to this request since second reading.
Remove for three. Third reading. It's been moved and properly seconded, and we have third reading on RZ twenty-two oh one. Any discussion? Any one all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Third reading is passed. Thank you, Ms. B. Next item on the agenda, request of two motions concerning the capital project sales tax. Mr. Washington?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for recognizing me. Um, as you know, um, roads has been my primary issue since I came on council, and I've been very aggressive about addressing roads, uh, in the rural areas, District One, District Five, District Seven, some of District Three. And we've had a lot of conversation about roads, um, and last week, during council meeting, um, we had a discussion that led me to request an amendment to be put on the agenda that would appropriate twenty-six million dollars of the Penny for Progress appropriations for rural roads. Since that time, I've had some conversation, uh, with Chairman McCain, who, again, I want to, to thank for being diligent in attempting to create some sort of agreement, and I've chatted with a couple of, of, other council members about this issue, and we are in the process of trying to work out something that would be agreeable, um, to folks in the rural area, uh, as well as the, uh, other participants in the Penny for Progress. So, at this time, um, I am going to remove that amendment, and we're going to have some further dialogue and try to get a little bit closer, um, to where I think we need to be and to where they think they need to be as well. So, there is a conversation going on, so at, at this moment, um, I would ask the chairman to withdraw that motion. And, Mr. Chairman, if I could speak on the second motion as well. There was a subsequent motion that I put up that, uh, requested, uh, public input to the Penny for Progress Commission. And, um, since this deliberation is going on, and, um, we may be making some progress, at this time, um, with the chairman's indulgence, I would pull that motion as well. However, if necessary, um, I think I've been on council long enough for you to know that, um, I'll be back if things don't work out, but it appears that there's some things that we can work out together, and I'm always in favor of diplomacy and working things out, except when it comes to my wife, I just do what she tells me. Um, and I'm told by Dr. Brenda Williams that I'm smart for doing that. So, with, with, with the chairman's indulgence, if, if you will, I will pull both these motions down, and we will continue to talk, to talk, and try to come to some agreement, if that's council's pleasure.
Thank you, Mr. Washington, and I appreciate that. And I think that you know that I mean what I say, when I say that a priority, and it has been from the beginning when I've had discussions. I can't discuss how much of an increase it is because it was in the concession, but you know that I was instrumental in getting more money than we ever had in the past that will be going to rural roads in this penny. And hopefully, we'll be able to find some more funds so that you and I can get closer. So, I appreciate that, Mr. Washington. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And, Mr. Chairman, I would like to please be a part of those conversations, please.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Um, next item on the agenda is, uh, committee reports, the budget workshop. Mr. Nixon?
Chair of council, good evening. Uh, today, council met for the first time to discuss, uh, the proposed FY twenty-three budget proposal. Today, at five o'clock, we discussed primarily the revenue accounts, uh, but we also introduced the budget, the rep expenditure accounts. Uh, so right now, as it stands, the revenue projections for the upcoming year is projected at fifty-four million, six hundred and seventy-two thousand, nine hundred and thirty-six dollars. Uh, the expenditures at this point are fifty-six million, one hundred and five thousand, four and thirty-eight dollars for a deficit, proposed budget at this time, of one million, four hundred and thirty-two thousand, five hundred and two dollars. Uh, so, uh, obviously, we have a great deal of work to do over the next couple of months. Uh, we also presented the schedule for the budget process to council, uh, where it's proposed to have third and final reading on the first meeting in June, which would bring us in compliance with the state law, that we have a balanced budget by July one. Uh, so a great deal of work to be done between now and then. Also presented was the capital request, uh, but, uh, we have allocated currently three million, five hundred thousand dollars in bond availability. Our request unfortunately is due to that amount at six million, two hundred and thirty-eight thousand, two hundred and forty-three dollars for a de, deficit for our capital request of two million, seven hundred and thirty-eight thousand, two hundred and forty-three dollars. Uh, so again, as you can tell, we have a great deal of work to do between now and the end of June, uh, but I'm sure- of June, but I'm sure we will get there. But there is obviously a significant amount of requests of limited dollars. That's all I have, sir.
We also discussed during the special meeting, basically sticking to the agenda, we discussed some other matters that Mr. Washington and I have just talked about, and that's basically the end of that beginning. executive session where we did discuss a legal matter, and that's what took us a little bit longer than we normally have. Next item on the agenda is report from council on other meetings, trainings, and our conference.
Here we go. Monthly reports, Mr. Blenner.
Council, in your packet, there's an announcement about the shrimp lease that will be this weekend. If you have a chairman, your name to me, please do so. And in addition, the Sumter Community Concert Band will be having a concert on May 1st. Let me know as well if you plan to attend that. And then the Board of Zoning Appeals meeting will be tomorrow at 3:00. And last but not least, on Thursday, at 6:00, there's a portrait unveiling for Principal, I'm sorry, superintendent Knox.
Thank you, Mr. Dean. Mr. Mixon County, first please report.
Chair, two quick items. On last Friday, April the 8th, your county employees had their first litter pickup. We picked up pine wood road. We had this very attractive shirt, which is what we gave one of our employees. On the back, it says "County Litter Pickers." They're a bright color for a reason, for safety. We have them picking up on the side of the road. Very attractive, but you have to pick up trash to earn one of these, so I'm just going to go ahead and lay that out there. We had 51 employees that actually volunteered to participate. We picked up 2.5 miles of road, primarily at Kane Savannah, the Kane Savannah Bus and Pine Wood Road, all the way to our recycle center. We picked up 144 bags of trash, but even more impressive, there was 3.69 tons of litter picked up by the litter picker. And the way we're able to do that is we had volunteers pick up the trash out of the ditches, which was a problem, and inside the ditches, cast it out into a flatter surface so the litter picker could pick it up. Very effective process where we have a lot of grant. Our next, we will have another, and another about our next employee litter pickup will be on April the 29th, and the location has yet to be selected. We'll make that call right before, because we have had it happen before, we're trying to do a pickup and someone cleaned it up ahead of us, so we want to make sure we have great impact when we do do this litter pickup. Second thing I want to mention about the litter program is that on April the 30th, we are engaged with the Litter Advisory Board and the Central Carolina Community Foundation to present what we're calling an "on-the-table" conversation for the community. We have, as Erica has graciously, she is actually on the Litter Advisory Board and has taken this under her wing to help make this process successful, but we have divided the county, the Litter Advisory Board has divided the county into four quadrants. We have that. But simply put, it's Highway 378 would be the east-west line all the way through our county, and Highway 15 would be the north-south quadrant. So if you can see that intersection, you kind of see how it lays out. There'll be a lot more information about that. But the purpose behind dividing the county up into quadrant is so they could actually have special events and activities in each quadrant separately, so that we can focus all our resources and attention as we move around the entire county. On this "on-the-table" conversation, we'll have three presenters, a chairman, the mayor, and the chairman of the Litter Advisory Board will be the presenters. But we will have four locations, and one in each one of those quadrants. And then we'll have four different groups represented in each one of those quadrants. Churches will be one group, so churches in that quadrant will have representatives, five representatives. And then schools, the same way. Chairman and I met with superintendent, and we are, and she's going to help us identify those particular individuals. Business and industry will be another group of 20, and then neighborhood associations and HOAs will be the last group, again, with 20 representatives in the quadrant, so a total of 80 people. There'll be presented questions to respond to. Then there will also, the last question will be for them to identify some projects within their quadrant. And once that's, once all that information is gathered, then there will be a grant that we submitted, and hopefully, we'll find out next week, or confident we'll get it, a grant from the community, the Central Carolina Community Foundation for $1,000 for each quadrant. The county's going to match that $1,000 for each quadrant, so we'll have some really, hopefully, we'll have some really successful projects within each one of the quadrants on a timely manner. So we're excited about that opportunity in April 30th, and thank Erica for her, and she is really championing that, if you know Erica, that means a lot. Thank you. The last item I want to report out on is on April the 1st, as you know, we had our first, our two ambulances that we have contracted with Guardian that started with a new contract. This is a three-year contract. They came into service since that date. We've only had one day that we actually were down to six ambulances in service, which is a great number for us, but the rest of the days, we've had at least eight or nine ambulances in service in Sumter, which is a tremendous impact, I can tell you, not only on the service level, but also the morale and such for our employees. It's a tremendous turnaround, so we're excited to get the positive results that we've had, and we look forward to this. Great relationship with Guardian for the next couple of years. That's all I have.
Can you also comment on the fact that because of that, we are able to station ambulances in the rural areas rather than coming all the way from town?
Thank you for bringing that up, sir. Yeah, so when we have eight or nine ambulances or eleven in a day, that allows us to station some ambulances out in the rural parts of the county, which again cuts down on the service time, which is very important, as you know. So yes, when we get to those kind of numbers, eight to nine ambulances, and based on, and we knew this, but based on the population and the standard, we need to be somewhere performing between eight and nine ambulances for the Sumter community, so we're glad to be at that peak level and performance level and able to provide a better service in rural parts of our county. Thanks, Senator.
Coming now to the public comment portion of our agenda. Citizens desiring to speak of energy in no more than three minutes. Comments made. Who's the chairman? Anyone wishing to speak to council? Please proceed to the podium to state your names for the record, for the comment portion of our agenda. It's now over.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Brenda Williams. I am a physician here in Sumter. First of all, I would certainly like to congratulate these young folk here in this room. It is exhilarating to see young people in leadership positions. That is so wonderful. God bless you. The Family Unit is 501(c)(3) nonprofit charitable organization here in Sumter. Two main things I want to mention right away. Number one, the American Rescue Plan Act is supposed to give Sumter County $10 million more dollars. Matter of fact, should come through next month, from what I'm reading, through the U.S. Treasury Department. Sumter County has already gotten $10 million. We're supposed to get $10 million last year. We're supposed to get another $10 million next month. And the Family Unit Incorporated certainly appreciates the help that Sumter County and City of Sumter have given mobile homeowners who own old mobile homes, over 20 years old, that have had roofs paving in, floors paving in, and no electrical power, no running water because of other things, and we have, by God's grace, been able to help them. So when this additional $10 million comes through, Sumter County, please continue to remember the mobile homeowners here in Sumter, the lowest-income people in our community. Please remember them and appropriate monies accordingly. Second, the Manning Avenue Bridge is 82 years old. Yes, the South Carolina Department of Transportation is supposed to be offered the replacement of this bridge, supposed to be. However, when studies are read on connectivities even dating back to eight years ago, six years ago, three years ago, monies were supposed to have been set aside for renovation of the bridge. Now, the D.O.T. says the bridge is too old and is crumbling and is functionally and structurally deficient. Please, Sumter County, talk to D.O.T. and let them know of the importance of tearing that bridge down. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Williams.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, council member. Just very briefly, would like to request information on the Penny for Progress Committee. I'd like to know what the process is. I'm sorry, Elizabeth Kilgore, representing Sumter branch, General ACP.
Thank you.
You're welcome, sir. I'd like to know what the process is for the selection of committee members for the Penny for Progress, since we have seven districts with council. I went on your website and pulled the names of previously served and served and again serving, and just would like to know what your guidelines are, if someone could respond to me right in on that, Mr. Chair. I really would appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Kilgore. Anyone else? Public comment session is now closed. Remove and properly seconded that we adjourned in discussion. Anyone here adjourned? Thank you.